The Planning Commission will come to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is additions and/or deletions to the agenda. Anybody who would like to modify the agenda from that published? Hearing no suggestions, entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion from Ann, support.
Support.
Support from Eric. Call a question in all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, agenda stands. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October the 7th. Does anybody have any comments on those minutes? Cheryl?
No, they were fine.
Mickey?
No comment.
Thank you. Ann?
I better not.
You better not, yeah. Yeah, she had something to do with it. Jim?
No comments.
Eric?
No.
Entertained a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion from Ann, support?
Support.
Support from somebody. Cheryl? Call a question in all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Lori and Ann, as usual, very nice job.
Thank you.
I'll give credit where it's due, for sure. Next item on the agenda, public comment and opportunity for citizens to speak to the commission about any item not on the agenda. Anybody who wants to speak about an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is a special land use review, redevelopment of three buildings for an extended stay hotel. The applicant is Studio 5 Ms. Holly Kaiser, the architect. Her address is 42508 Woodward Suite D, Bloomfield Hills. The owner of the property is Dr. Munir Khalid. His address is 21430 East River. The location of the property legally is Graysgarden subdivision, lots 44, 45, and 46. The common description is 8950, 8970, and 8990 MacComb. This is the property right around, including the former Rosetta Braden Realty office, plus the vacant lot immediately to the east, and the commercial building, which is immediately to east of the vacant lot. So it's all right opposite, basically Kroger's. The proposal is to redevelop three existing buildings and a vacant lot into an extended stay hotel with nine rooms. In addition, there would be a small conference room, a small restaurant, a gift shop, and some offices, some business offices, that would be part of the overall proposal. The zoning is MSD MacComb Street District. So the relevant ordinances are defined under MacComb Street District, where a hotel of this type requires special land use approval. So that brings Article 22 into play, and then following that, it requires site plan approval, which is Article 21. So, the review procedure for an application like this is multi-step. We had the first step back on October the 7th, when there was a pre-application conference here in front of the commission, where the project conceptually was introduced to both the commission and the public. So the applicants move forward, and now we're ready for the special land use, the public hearing, and the recommendation to township board, steps two and three. Assuming the planning commission were to approve this, the application would go to the board. The board would then decide on the special land use. If they approved it, it would come back to us, and then the planning commission would review this for site plan approval. So it's basically five steps, and we're at steps two and three tonight. Depending on what the planning commission hears, it's discretion as to what it wants to do tonight, vote or not vote. So we'll have to see. So, at this point, Brian, would you show us your slides, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hope everybody had a nice holiday. Back to work. Once again, it's as though you read my whole presentation, your intro. So applicants before you this evening for special land use approval, they are seeking to redevelop the site with an extended stay hotel and other ancillary uses. The property consists essentially of, if you can see the cursor there, the former Rosetta Braden site, the vacant lot to the east, and then the other existing building, which would then be between this vacant lot and the urgent care center. You'll recall, last meeting, the doctor was in for a minor addition sketch plan to the urgent care center. So we're basically working from that point back to the west. Also in play is a little bit of the area north of the former Rosetta Braden site, which is currently simply just vacant open land, but it is part of an outlot that is part of his property as well. And I'll show you the site plan momentarily. You can see exactly what's in play, but I want you to have a feel for this site, this site, this site, and then this site as well. Procedurally, again, this is within the MacComb Street District. It is listed as a special land use. As Chairman noted, Article 22 comes into play, provides the required process, as well as the review standards upon which the commission is to make its decision. If you are to make a decision, it should be in the form of a recommendation to the township board. Ultimately, they have the final approval authority over the special land use. I've already mentioned this point. 7.2(c) is the specific section reference that notes hotels and other ancillary uses requiring special land use approval. 22.2 lays out the process for review of a special land use, which does require also a public hearing, as was mentioned earlier. That is also a statutory requirement. Ultimately, anytime you have a special land use, the first thing we have to do is mail out a notice to property owners within 300 feet of the site, and also publish a notice in the paper before we can bring it in front of you. So that has all been done in this instance. We have not received any written communications that I'm aware of. Lori is shaking her head, no. The review standards upon which you are to base your recommendation are found in 22.3. And you can see, these are the other bullet points here. I don't even know what to call that, the diamond shape. When I converted it to PDF, it changed all my bullet points. Compatibility with the master plan, compatibility with adjacent uses, impacts on traffic, the natural environment, compliance with the ordinance provisions, and then lastly, adequacy of public services to serve the site. And then finally, 21.1 does indicate that all special land uses require a full site plan review and approval by the planning commission. So again, procedurally, we'll conduct a public hearing tonight. If the commission sees fit, you can make a recommendation to the board. That recommendation will then go to the board at the next available meeting. If the board then grants special land use approval, then the petitioner will come back for the final step, which would be site plan review and approval, again, back at the planning commission. Here's a look at the site plan specifically. You can see here, so just to get your bearings, on the right-hand side or the east side, this is oriented to the north. So this is the urgent care building. This is the building sort of in the middle, and then this would be the former Rosetta Braden site, as we like to refer to it. This surface lot here is essentially the wooded lot in between the buildings, and then the surface lot moving to the north, that's part of that outlot I mentioned earlier. This is that area that, again, is also currently a wooded, unused piece of property. In total, the project is proposing redevelopment of these three existing buildings, as well as those vacant parcels. It does include nine extended stay hotel rooms, as well as a conference space, office space, a small retail space, and then also a small restaurant. I incorporated the square footages here just to give you a feel for how much each accounted for. I believe in total, if I recall correctly, the buildings account for approximately 75 or 7600, 7300 square feet of total floor area. So in relation, these are the ancillary uses, again, in relation to the size of the overall development. And then ultimately, not including the spaces on the far right side of the screen, they do have 34 parking spaces, which is the minimum that's required for this particular development. I was only able to incorporate the front building elevation, but essentially, they all provide the same or similar characteristics, pardon me, in terms of materials, design, and really, I'm going to let the project architect speak more to this, she can do it better than I, but the principal materials essentially are stucco or an ephesus-type material. I don't know if that's specifically what's proposed here, but a stucco material along with limestone accents. So it would have a stone base, and then there are other accent points for some vertical projections. There are some columns. There is a lot of ornamentation. You can see some of the columns, you can see some of the archways amongst this front facade. I should take one step back. This view on the screen is essentially from MacComb Street towards the former Braden site. So those are the two buildings, which in essence are sort of connected across the top, if you will, if you can get that perspective. So this archway is, in essence, the current driveway between the two buildings, if that gives you some perspective on the site. They are incorporating a new material into the roof pitches, is to be a clay tile roof, which I think, again, ties into sort of the architectural theme. I'm going to let Holly explain that, she can do a better job than I. There also, this archway does provide sort of the main pedestrian connection. So the public sidewalk is essentially out here, and then there's a main walkway into the site off of the public sidewalk and towards the main building entrance. One other thing that the project does is try to create sort of a unified streetscape across the frontage. So I went back to the site plan real quickly, but you can see, the idea here is to create a uniform landscape pattern in terms of placements, materials, sizes, those types of things. And then also the buildings themselves. There's, in essence, almost a common line whereby, I believe, the east and the west buildings are essentially the front lines that they are at now, but the middle building is expanded forward to match that. Again, the idea being to create kind of a consistent unified theme across the frontage. In terms of our review, I believe you all have our letter dated November the 26th of this year. The simple point is, generally speaking, we're of the opinion that the standards of 23.3 for special land use approval are met. We do have a few conditions we would suggest if you are going to consider a favorable recommendation. These would ultimately be enforced via the site plan review. First and foremost is compliance with the Tree and Woodlands Protection Ordinance. Second would be any requirements of the township engineer. Thirdly would be any requirements of the township fire department, and then lastly would be anything provided by Department of Public Services. Although, given that these are essentially developed sites, for the most part, I don't expect there to be any issues with public services in this particular case. The other point, and again, this is in our letter, that we would suggest you include as a condition, if you're going to consider a favorable recommendation, would be a condition that the parcels all be combined into one. Essentially, they are one, two, I believe at least three individual parcel IDs right now, and as you notice in the site plan, the site functions pretty much together, with the exception maybe of the need for this, but you're essentially going over, this is a parcel, this is the vacant parcel in the middle, and then this is the larger Braden parcel, which again includes the outlot there. But you can see, the circulation pattern that's intended is for cross-access from this drive over through the site, or even just from this drive up and through the site. So there's a lot of, there's a lot going on across these different parcels. Ultimately, in order to achieve that, they're going to have to be combined. Another approach to that would be for some form of cross-access or shared access agreement or easement over the properties. As far as I'm concerned, I don't see a reason why you couldn't do both, if you felt there was a need for that added protection. The biggest concern is, if this project moves forward and ultimately is developed, what happens if somebody wants to just take over one of the buildings? Well, now we've got a hodgepodge where I need your property to access my property, which ultimately is why, again, I think if we, as long as we require the combination, they'd have to come back for a lot split, at which point we'd need to make sure they have access, adequate parking, or a shared parking agreement. It might be easier to just do it now, because we do have the ability to require that. Ultimately, you know, I mean, I think we all hope, if this goes forward, that it's a successful project, and we're not worried about splitting off buildings and parking for other uses or redevelopment, but, you know, obviously, that's probably what the people that first developed the initial site thought some 40, 50 years ago, and here we are today, having to deal with this. So that would be the other suggested condition. Everything else I have at this point, Mr. Chair, I can proceed or I can stop, but everything else I have is tied to the site plan. I think these are elements that, since we are all here, I think it is worth having the conversation, but with that being said, you're not necessarily in a position tonight where I would suggest you take any consideration of actual site plan review and approval. I just don't think we're at that point yet.
I quite agree with that, but I also think it would give us sense for the commission of potential discussion items down the road.
Absolutely. Let me just kind of run through my list then. Again, these are all highlighted in our review letter, which has been shared with the petitioner, by the way, so they are aware of some of the questions that have arisen as part of this process. The first one is a question I did not address in my letter, oddly enough, as I say that for my segue. One of the concerns throughout the process was that essentially, this site did and technically does have a prior approval for a project. You may recall that originally, the project entailed a redevelopment of the two westerly buildings into an office development. The last thing we want to ever have is a property with multiple projects approved for it, because that's going to do nothing but confuse everybody involved. To that end, the approval that was granted for that site plan actually expires tomorrow. So I think we are clean on that position. Your ordinance has a one-year timeframe within which you have to essentially initiate the project. They have not done so, therefore, at this point, I would deem that project to essentially be null and void as of tomorrow. And ultimately, since this still has to go to the board and come back for site plan, there's no real issue of overlapping multiple site plan approvals, if you will. So I wanted to make sure that point was out there first and foremost, especially since I didn't address that in my letter. The second point is, if you look at the parking spaces on the currently vacant wooded lot, these spaces are all striped at 16 and 1/2-foot depth, which is allowable by your ordinance, but in order to do so, you have to have a two-foot overhang. Your ordinance typically would require an 18 and 1/2-foot space, so if they were, if they were abutting spaces, you need 18 and 1/2 feet, 18 and 1/2 feet centerline down the middle. While if you're adjacent to a curb, you can overhang by two feet. One of the concerns that came up as part of this review process was the width of this sidewalk, and I believe it is a five-foot sidewalk. Given that, the concern arises that a two-foot overhang on a five-foot sidewalk, I'm not good at math, but that becomes essentially a three-foot clearance, which is a little tight. So ultimately, what we're going to want to see, I believe there is sufficient room here, and I've mentioned this to the project architect, I think ultimately what we'll achieve here would be to extend that to a seven-foot wide sidewalk, which would then have a two-foot overhang, plus a five-foot clearance for pedestrians. So I think that would be a solid improvement to the project. Another item, this will be one that ultimately the commission will have discretion over, will be the use of front yard parking. There are three spaces in total that technically are in the front yard, two of which are existing, if you can follow my cursor again, if you're looking over here in front of the easterly building, there are spaces there currently. The third one is a new space on the currently vacant lot, that just barely, about half of it even, maybe even less than half of it, is technically in front of the building face, but by definition, that becomes front yard. It does meet the 25-foot required setback, but it is a little bit in the front yard. So that is something ultimately Planning Commission will have discretion over. One of the suggestions at this point might be to eliminate that space, if it's the desire of the commission. The point I want to make to that is, in order to do so, however, you'd also have to grant a one-space parking reduction. They are currently right at the minimum amount of parking, so you could do so. You do have the authority to do that as Planning Commission. So you have the discretion to either allow or not allow the parking in the front yard, and then you would have, if you wanted to disallow it, you would also have the discretion to allow them a one-space reduction. The side and rear parking setbacks are slightly deficient. You can see in this area here, because of the configuration of the lot, these are about four or five-foot setbacks. Minimum is typically 10 along this portion, and then the same along this portion at the outlot up here. This is another instance, because we're in the MacComb Street District, Planning Commission has discretion to waive or modify those setback requirements, so that would be something else, again, unless the plan is changed, that'll be something else you'll have to consider. I've also suggested that, because of the nature of the use of the site, I do believe there will be deliveries of some sort. The inclusion of the restaurant is really what triggered that for me. Anytime you have, even a small restaurant, there's going to be some amount of delivery. So ultimately, what we want to see is a dedicated loading space. One of the things I talked with the project architect about was potentially using the urgent care site, which could almost duplicate the loading zone that they will currently have as part of their previously approved project, and then allow use of that space for the hotel site during off-business hours for the urgent care. That's something I think is worth discussing. It doesn't necessarily have to happen that way. If not, they'll have to provide it somewhere else, west of that particular location. It does get a little tight, because there's just not a lot of room. There's drive aisles, there's parking, there's sidewalks. There's not much else to work with there. So we'll have to either try to get creative with that site, or find a way, again, it's not usually a big concern if we can require them and hold them to having deliveries at off-hour periods or off-peak periods, because then we're usually not in conflict, but the last thing I think any of us want is for a delivery vehicle to pull up here while there's cars parked in these spaces that end up being stuck, and they need to get out of there at, you know, 5 o'clock at the end of the business day. Another point is tied to the landscape plan. I think this site will be interesting, but one of the things we want to make sure is because, while it is a nice improvement to the entryway to the sites, we want to make sure that we don't have any visibility issues, particularly at these corners. Coming in, not as big of an issue. Exiting is definitely an issue, could be the case here, could also be the case here. Your ordinance requires a clear vision triangle area, in essence, in that area. You can't have anything above, I believe it's two or three feet in height. So they'll have to, ultimately, I think what we'll have, the applicant will have to come back to us and demonstrate that that is in fact met. It doesn't mean that they can't do any plantings in these areas, it just means they would have to be maintained at a very low-rise level, such that they don't disrupt, I'm not going to pretend to drive a car, but, so they don't disrupt the sightlines as though somebody were in their vehicle. The landscape plan, again, you can see a bit of it here. Certainly an improvement over what's there now, if you look at the developed portions of the sites. There are a couple of areas where they are a little bit deficient. That ultimately falls within Planning Commission discretion as well, so if there are comments or concerns about the landscape's plan specifically, you have the ability to modify those requirements or require them to locate plantings elsewhere if they are deficient in a particular area. There is a waste receptacle and mechanical equipment area on the north side of the east building. This is going to be housed in an enclosure wall or a screen wall. I just want to see details at some point of that particular wall, and then I want to also have a better idea of the nature of the dumpsters themselves. Typically, your ordinance requires a concrete base pad to support the weight of the vehicles, the refuse removal vehicles, if that's in fact the type of dumpsters or trash receptacles that these will be. So that's another thing, I think we just need a little bit of clarification on. There are some decorative light fixtures, you can see them better here, across the site. Most of them are wall-mounted. I didn't see any, or at least didn't notice any pole-mounted fixtures. This is just, again, a case where I think we just need a little bit more detail. Want to know exactly the types and styles of the fixtures. And then, within Planning Commission discretion, is the ability to require or waive a photometric plan if you do or do not feel that it's warranted. There's also a proposed ground sign. It is right here, and by my estimates, it complies with the height, the area, and the setback requirements, but I've just asked the petitioner for a little bit more detail so we can ensure that that's the case, rather than having me estimate things. And then lastly, and obviously, probably not least importantly, probably most importantly, I think becomes the discussion about the building design, architecture, materials, as it relates to your MacComb Street standards. I referenced earlier, as part of the special use discussion, that I think the petitioner is better served to try to explain that to you than I, but obviously, it's an important consideration. You do have material and design standards in the MacComb Street District, and we want to make sure that those are being upheld. So with that, Mr. Chair, those are all of the discussion points I wanted to put forth. Be happy to take any questions if you have them at this time.
I would like you to back up to the, I think, six special land use standards, and maybe just review those briefly for the board.
Yep, absolutely. So compatibility with the master plan. Master plan identifies the property as MacComb Street mixed use. The types of services mentioned are retail, office, service for the community, and also potentially for others off-island. There are a few design guidelines or design elements within the goals as well. I've listed a few of them specifically in my review letter. I believe that the project, again, as from a special land use standpoint, certainly complies with the requirements or the statements contained within your master plan. Compatibility with adjacent uses. You can see what's around them. To the north is essentially open space. To the west is a DTE substation. To the east is the doctor's own urgent care. Across the street is Kroger. I think adding and incorporating a new service, being the hotel, a small retail component, being the restaurant and the gift shop, as well as a little bit of office space, I think based on what's in the area, certainly don't see any harmful effects of the proposed use based on the existing uses in the area. Traffic impacts. Again, these are three developed sites, albeit they haven't been used in many years, given the somewhat limited scope of the project, and the fact that MacComb Street is your primary commercial corridor on the island. Don't anticipate any traffic issues. I think I mentioned in my letter, because of the mixture of uses, it's a little difficult to actually run traffic projections or traffic, estimate traffic counts for this particular type of use, but to me, I, again, based on the review, based on knowing what's out there, don't necessarily see that that's going to be a major concern. Overall environment, this one is where conformance with the Woodlands ordinance comes in. As you can see, on the developed portions of the site, there are no natural features to protect. However, the vacant site in the middle, the little bit of the outlot to the north, certainly there are some trees that I think are worth protecting, so ultimately, we'll need to make sure the applicant complies with that. That'll be sort of treated as part of the landscape plan, in my opinion, because what we'll need ultimately is to determine what's out there, what's being removed, and then are there any additional trees that need to be replanted in place of trees that are to be removed, and I'd like to see that incorporated into one consistent landscape plan. Overall zoning ordinance, this really just falls to the site plan review at this point, and I've sort of relayed the initial comments or suggestions that I have at this point. I don't see any major ordinance I don't see any major ordinance deficiencies. Where, where, where there are clear deficiencies, those are all areas that the Planning Commission has some discretion. Other than that, I think it's just some cleanup and some clarification that is likely needed. And then lastly, compatibility with the adequacy of public services. As I mentioned earlier, the three sites, the three buildings previously developed were on Macomb Street. This is the primary business corridor through the community. Don't envision that there are going to be any real issues as it relates to public infrastructure and facilities. But again, in order to protect ourselves, I want to make sure that DPS review is included as, as a condition such that we will make sure that they're presented with the site plan and that any comments they have will be, will be addressed.
Okay, very good. Let's see if any commissioners have any questions or comments before we move to the applicant. Cheryl?
No comment right now.
Mickey?
Nope, not at this time.
Jay?
Couldn't let this opportunity go by. I think these are all questions for Brian, but if not, then I'll wait and we'll ask them to the appropriate person. You mentioned the possibility of a lot combination and then potentially shared easements or cross-easements. Maybe I misunderstand this, does a combined lot retain the, the, the nature of the component lots after it's combined? Or is it one lot?
Only for, for legal description purposes because the legal description technically right now is part of lots forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six and the outlot. So from that standpoint, yes, but as a parcel combination, it becomes a single parcel.
Okay, so, so the expectation, because you were talking about that being a, a potential benefit to have those cross-easements. That would be a potential easement if somebody wanted to break those back out and the expectation would be that if they were to break them back out, they would break them out into the lots as they existed.
Potentially, potentially.
Because once it's combined, they could combine it, you know, split it in half, they could do all kinds of things with it, right?
They could, I'm sure they could come up with far more creative things than I, but yes, yeah. The idea there is again, we just, it's, it's being designed and intended to function as a single site. So we need to make sure that, that that's going to occur. And I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to leave them separate knowing that we have to go from A to B to C to have the site function properly. So the combination to me is a must. If you wanted to include the, the easement language, then you could certainly do that as well. But the, once it's combined, that's essentially, that addresses the concern for now. The easement would be potentially resolving a future issue if there were one.
Right, okay. You mentioned that the, the prior approval expires tomorrow and that is because no work has been done in the one-year period. I understand some work has been done at the site?
Only the internal, nothing that was, that was an element that was required as part of the site plan approval. So I, I feel pretty comfortable in that. The, the work that was done, there were permits pulled for some internal work on the building, but no changes to the structures themselves has occurred at this point. And that's really where I think the focus of the site plan is.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page on that. You, you mentioned that the rear parking lot is not compliant with the setback and I, I can see that. Is there any reason why, and maybe this one goes to the applicant more, why the whole lot couldn't be moved, you know, six feet to the west? Or eight feet to the west or whatever that would require to get the, a required setback on all three sides of that parcel?
I have to defer to the petitioner.
And then the other thing that, that caught me as you said, you, off-business hours for the urgent care. And there aren't a lot of those from what I understand, I think it's eight to eight every day. Seven days a week is, as I understand, so that might throw a wrench into that.
Well, the only thing, I, I guess that's, I, I was not aware of that, maybe perhaps I should have been. Oh, come back. We did, and I'm not sure if, no, I think that's the handicap space. I know as part of that sketch plan review, we did require them to provide a loading space. So it may in essence just end up being if they can share that space. And whether it's off-hours or not, maybe of little consequence if that was appropriate place, appropriately placed, which I believe it would have been if I reviewed it and then we granted sketch plan approval for it. I would hope so.
That's all my notes.
Thanks, Jay. No questions right now? Jim? Steve?
No, very nicely done, thank you.
Eric? Okay, and let's, thank you, Brian, your usual excellent job. And let's hear from Ms. Kaiser. Welcome. You're becoming a fixture around here.
I know, man, you graduate, go away and suddenly you can't, you know, come back after a long time. I'm here all the time, surprising. I do have some additional considerations I'd like to pass out first.
Please.
I'm going to actually address the last one first about the loading dock, just really quick. It was approved to have loading in this zone right here. And because it's a, a medical office, it, it, you know, it doesn't have large semi-stopping. This is really for postal and for packaging and for medical supply pickup or the, the biomedical pickup. So the thought process in this, which is actually included in the additional considerations is that this would continue to stay as a standard day package and postal loading and delivery area for all the buildings. But when it comes to restaurant, most of the time they're doing their prep work basically in the middle of the night. And they get their deliveries really late at night, really late or really early in the morning. And the desire was, was to have them basically parked just outside where the service door is, which is currently right here. So that they would then go up the handicap ramp and easily be able to access the building, but park their semi because it will more than likely have to be a semi right along this strip here. And it would be off-hours for pretty much everybody on Macomb. And so that way it won't really disturb anyone. The hotel rooms are far enough away from where the semis are. It won't actually encroach upon any cars that might be staying over in this zone here where I don't have to worry about any semis turning around. They would basically be able to, I can't get this mouse to, come on, that's it? Oh, shoot, I screwed it all up.
Brian, can you have a helper out there?
I don't know.
Oh, no, oh, oh, okay, it's back. Sorry. Okay, there we go. I know, no touchy, all right, we're going to let it stay. So they'll be able to back in and then drive out or vice versa right there down a, a standard drive aisle, which is a straight shot in and out. And Kroger's is right here across the street. So it's very easy for them to actually access the site and get in and out without disturbing any traffic patterns or anything like that, as well as any parked cars that might be there in the evening. So that's what loading was anticipated to be. These circles here, just to let you know, are what are required but for NFPA for the fire trucks. I did meet with the fire marshal. We went through this site as I was designing it in the beginning, way at the very, very early stages. And he said that I needed to have fifty-foot turnarounds for their specific emergency access and their trucks. So this here in a sense could actually also be the turnaround for a semi. So we have onsite two fifty-foot turnaround spaces for emergency response vehicles as well as for any delivery vehicles that may need to actually do that. Let's see, we could, if you'd like, go through the considerations. And I gave you mine, one second please.
Okay, yeah, I really want to focus the discussion on, on the special land use standards. And I think it would really help everybody if you could, you could speak to the, the architecture and the design and the vision.
Sure, we'll start there.
Rather than the details.
Okay, we'll just start there. The desire of this, the reason why the hotel had come up was doing the due diligence along Macomb Street. And we know that this has been brought up multiple times, this site. The doctor felt that what he was proposing originally is really already shown already along Macomb Street. And a lot of them are vacant at this time, as in office buildings and some small retail areas. And by changing the site into multiple small offices and multiple retail just seemed really just not a right direction to go for how small the island is. But there was a, a request to actually have more extended stays and small hotels. We do have the Bishop's Inn at the end of the street, which is, you know, pretty popular place for weddings and for, you know, small get-togethers. But when holiday times come, there's no place here on the island except for the Pilot House for people to have extended relatives come and stay. Or even when there's golf outings, when there's the fishing tournaments across there at, on the Detroit River, there is an actual need. And there's a creative ways to be able to bring outside people off the island to the island. And this was one way to do it because they could do some corporate functions by having a actual small banquet facility slash conference area. There can be some corporate groupings that can happen on weekend adventures. Instead of having them drive all the way to Dearborn or go to Birmingham, they can stay here in the downriver area where automotives can be and some other types of uses is that. So those were the draws as well as possibly bridal showers and, you know, things of that sort. And that's why we only have nine rooms. The Pilot House seems to get filled up quite a bit. So this would allow us to have some extended stay units. They're not necessarily always going to be extended stay. There would be truly three dedicated ones that would have larger kitchen facilities that would be in the two-story building and they'd be on the second floor. The, the less, I'd say desirable areas across from the bar. So that they, they could actually just be sort of more like, you know, mini apartments, you know, month-to-month type of a, a situation for the executive who comes into town for just a few months to work with the company. But the major hotel area would end up having a restaurant that would actually be able to accommodate the high school kids or middle school kids after school. It would have sandwiches and salads and ice cream and, and places for these kids to go. The hope was is that eventually there would be, the upper deck would actually have seating so that people could come and just the kids could play up there, they could take their Xboxes, do, you know, just have a place to hang out. Where there isn't quite a lot of locations here on the island for that specific amenity. The overall architectural feel of this was a concept that really we were trying to think about what would be appropriate for Grosjean. It's not going to be anything like a, a Holiday Inn or anything like that. The desire was, was to think about who founded Grosjean? And the French were the, the ones that, you know, showed up first. And the names that we were coming up with, it's still being, you know, flushed out as to exactly its final name for it. But we thought something that would have something to do with marine. You have to forgive me if my words are a little tied up today, but French Riviera type feel. But we know though that going down through the vision of the township for Macomb Street is to have a, a main street type feel. So the architectural look would be sort of a mix of wooden beams, stucco, brick, stone, Tudor-esque, but really kind of trying to push it more into south of France, kind of marine city type feeling where with the waters still a focus. We don't want it to feel completely out of place, but we don't want it to also look like every building on the island either. This is really a special use. We want it to be able to stand out. We want it to be this little gem at the beginning of the street as you go down the CVC that you see something that isn't what you've always seen in the past, which is the Orange Honning. And basically three different buildings. We are trying to create a complete complex and a complete vision within these sites as well as linking in the urgent care so that we can, as, as Brian was talking about, the landscape would night, would flow and we'd actually add more landscaping to the street front. The whole reason why we did a arch over the buildings was to really try to give those two buildings a whole new feel. And by connecting them also helped to continue the entire complex a little bit further for the eye. If we kept them all as separate buildings, people would still have a really hard time getting past what was always there. We feel that by adding that arch and the upper story area and hopefully a roof depth on this would really change the entire feel. And people would forget the fact that those buildings still exist underneath a brand-new skin. As Brian did state, we did want to pull out the one building, which then gave us the proper-sized space for a restaurant with a very small dining front. But it did actually provide enough so that it could have multiple tenants. If one didn't work, we could bring in another one, it could be a bakery, it could be a sandwich shop, it can be an ice cream shop. It's, it's not something so big that you can't get a new tenant in. And that was the goal, was as we designed this, we designed it in such a way that it can bring in new people as the, the island changes and the demographics change and things of that sort. We don't want to have another building that just becomes completely unused. Unfortunately, we did have to remove the wooded lot in the middle. It was absolutely essential to be able to create enough parking to accommodate this need as well as to actually join all these sites together. We do have some architectural elements at the front, which would be sort of larger height columns to actually accentuate that this is the entrance for the parking for the complex as well as be another way to jump over the middle parking to get to the building next to it, which is currently the two-story office slash barber shop area. We would be giving that a completely new skin. Currently, the access to that building is facing the urgent care. Our desire is to completely flip that a hundred and eighty degrees and have it be accessible from the parking lot side so that it does actually face our complex instead of facing away. So that it also improves the site from the urgent care because we'd be adding landscape. We'd actually be improving that side of the building instead of turning it into the back of a building per se. Still keeping some windows on the, on the lower level and then doing a few, maybe a couple of upper ones. But again, as you all know, hotel rooms need wall space for beds and what have you. So we'll have to do a few architecturally interesting things upstairs. Let's see, what else can I talk about? So, let's see, so the compatibility with the master plan is that we believe we've kept with the vision and really improved these sites as to what they currently are and really added back more landscaping, pushing the parking off the street front, pushing it to the side and to the, the north of the complex and just really massively improving our streetscape along the way. The compatibility with adjacent uses, we believe that this will actually help to bring more people to the site as well as complement other uses on the main street there, the CVC. There is a, there's a possibility that there could be linkage with the Bishop's Inn to be able to actually increase their ability to have larger parties and have this become their extra rooms and where they can have larger events. And also with the greenscape that we would have in between the buildings, there might be ways that the Bishop's Inn as well as this hotel can join forces and have even extra, have weddings over there and receptions over here. There can be a lot of joint forces as well as linking with the golf courses. That there can be some of their runoff of people coming from out of, out of the area to stay there and also participate in some larger golf outings. Let's see, there will obviously not be any alcohol at this space. So we believe if you're having parties at the hotels, you would walk across the street and use some of the larger restaurants and the, the bar across the street so that can bring even more people in. Impact on the traffic, as Brian has stated in his, his write-up, we're really not adding to this. This is a main thoroughfare, there's already anticipated to be quite a bit of traffic. We aren't adding anything unusual to this. It's standard cars and just regular delivery trucks that would be coming to this. There isn't anything unusual that would be occurring to it. So we don't believe that there would be a change to the impact at all to our traffic. The impact on the environment, as I had stated, we do have to remove the wooded area. And unfortunately, we've had to remove more wooded area to put the parking in the back to accommodate our minimum need. I do have in our packet there expansion to the parking, which might help to answer one of the questions that Mr. Fushy brought up, which is the reason why the parking was pushed to the one side, was the anticipation that this will become a success and that we would have a need for more parking. If it be that we get to add a couple more rooms going up or even if actually the banquet facilities becomes something that really takes off and we find that we have a need, the goal was, was how are we going to address that? So we decided we needed to look at it. So we decided we needed to look at it. But we didn't want to have to rip out the entire parking lot to then add these extra spaces. Instead, we wanted to just modify what we currently had to add extra spaces. We don't get to add many, unfortunately. The only thing we can probably add is an extra four spaces to this whole thing. But it still was something that we felt we needed to address. So that is the reason why that parking is set up the way that it currently is. And as I had discussed, the, uh, public services, we had actually met with fire and emergency, had to address the emergency vehicles for this. And we believe we have addressed what they are requesting so that they're able to access all sides of this building with their trucks as well as have a route to be able to connect the fire hoses across the street, which is currently where the existing hookup is, which is in the Kroger parking, uh, along the, the Kroger frontage at the street there. Does anyone have any other questions in regards to architecturally?
Have we gone all the way through how, um, let's, can you scroll to the, uh, to the six items?
Do I?
There we go. Okay, so you've talked about, uh, impact on traffic, the environment, compliance with zoning ordinance and public services. So I think you've covered, you've, you've covered basically the gamut. The compliance with the zoning ordinance standards, as Brian said, is primarily site plan.
Exactly.
Not special land use. Okay, so, uh, no reason to, to dive any further into that. Uh, I guess, uh, what I'd like to do is hold the discussion right now and let's go to the public hearing. And then, uh, we'll get comments from the citizens and we'll bring it back to the table and, uh, go through and see what kind of questions and comments that, uh, board members have.
Sounds good, okay.
All right, so at this point, I will formally open the public hearing regarding the, uh, special land use for the, uh, creation of the Extended Stay Hotel. Is there anyone who would like to discuss this, uh, with the planning commission? Any questions or comments? Mr. Smith? Would you come on up please? And, uh, we know who you are, but come on up to the microphone so everybody can hear you in the audience, television audience.
Uh, yes, I have some comments generally about what's happening here. Fifty years ago, I decided we needed a supermarket. And did the original thing with Kroger's. Uh, my friends describe it as Smith's folly. So I developed that. And subsequently, uh, I took over the closed factory, it was the diamond factory there, and converted that to both retail and office, which has been a successful venture. We don't need any more retail or office space on Macomb Street. We have vacancies beyond any possible use. And so I think it's logical to look at a different operation. And this, what they're proposing, uh, is different. And it, I think, is essential for the street to have something that is different. It's gonna bring in more people and not, you know, worry about whether it's a, uh, competitive factor. As far as my properties on Kroger and the other corner, I think it's a good thing to have some other people here. And I would, uh, highly recommend it because it is unique that we, uh, approve it. And, uh, there are some questions, of course, about some of the things that they propose to do in it, as far as I'm concerned, but, uh, uh, that'll shake itself out as, once it gets started. Because you, uh, you never know where you're gonna end up once you start building things. Things change. But I think it's essential that we do approve it and we get rid of those ugly, uh, structures there. Hide them, whatever we wanna call it, but, uh, they're pretty bad. So I think this is gonna be a major improvement for the whole island.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And by the way, Mr. Smith, thank you for the vision you had fifty years ago because the things you built made a big difference for Grosil.
That's true.
So thank you.
Still do.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion from Jay, support. Support from Ann. Call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, public hearing is closed. So we'll go now down the table and see what people think. I'm gonna start down here with Steve. Questions, comments, uh, concerns, issues?
Well, definitely my first comment is thank you for the, uh, public participation tonight and those watching at home, definitely it's important that we as a community all be involved in what we're doing here to continue to see Grosil grow and to bring new people to the island. My second comment echoes what I stated earlier. Uh, I applaud, uh, both the applicant and Brian for these well-thought-out plans, uh, and ideas. You've covered all the six points to, for, for my, uh, approval and definitely thank you for covering it. No questions from me.
Thank you, Steve. Jim?
Oh, uh, thank you once again. I don't have a whole lot to add. Once again, you did cover all the points, uh, for this, this part of, uh, our discussion. I really don't have a lot of further questions. I am glad to see that it's something different, echoing, I think, probably what you're gonna hear throughout the table, so that's, that's a good thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Ann?
Well, I really have nothing to add, but I think we have heard from, from, from the, uh, public also to, to support such a, a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Vujicic?
Yeah, I, um, I, 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 well, let me say it this way. I think as far as the, um, uh, the special land use steps are concerned, I think for the most part, uh, those are met. I think there are enough, um, kind of open items that, uh, you know, I'm not sure we're ready to move this along at this point. I think I heard that earlier in the meeting, but I just wanna kind of echo that at this point that, uh, I'm not sure it makes any sense to do anything other than provide, you know, additional feedback and, and, and look for this to come up, come back again. But I, um, you know, as far as the special land use standards are concerned, I think, uh, all of those are met. And I think the, you know, the, the issues are gonna arise when we get to the site plan approval, uh, if it gets to that, to that stage.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you.
Is it Ann? Looking at the layout, I think for Shabbat, it is such an improvement to what's there right now. And I'd love to see a new, some new buildings and some new landscaping. As far as the special land use, it seems like you've pretty much met the criteria. And from what I understand is that's what we could vote on tonight and then it would go to the board. And then it would come back and we could get into more detail on some of these things. You raised some good points about the easements. And it seems like at this point, it's not gonna be a problem. It looks like the only easements you need are between urgent care and the rest of the property if it gets consolidated. And since the doctor owns both, I mean, I can't see that being an issue. But, uh, no, I, I think it'll be quite an improvement to have some nice cleaned up buildings there and landscaping. So good job on the plans.
Thank you, Mickey. Cheryl?
Well, uh, my comments will echo everyone else's actually. Thank you for taking an interest in improving Macomb Street and updating it to a certain extent and removing those buildings that have been vacant as long as I've lived here, I think. So it'll definitely be an improvement. As far as special land use goes, yeah, I'm, I'll agree with everyone else. All of the requirements have been met. So I look forward to the site plan if we get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Eric?
Yeah, overall, I think it's a, it's a great plan for the site and certainly we, it could be a significant improvement. The one question I have is what's the difference between a hotel and an extended stay hotel, right? So obviously as a boutique hotel, I think everyone can get warm and fuzzy and be very happy with this. But if this were to somehow turn into the opposite of a boutique hotel and, uh, just become an extended stay hotel, how do you, how do we, how do we, you know, be careful with that as, as we go down the road?
Actually, I can answer that. There are only certain rooms that actually would be set up for extended stay. The rest of them are standard hotel room. They wouldn't even be able to house a person that long. There won't be like, the extended stay rooms would actually have a, a larger-sized refrigerator. They'd actually have dishes and, and cups and, uh, silverware. Basically, they'd be able to have a small kitchenette in a sense. In a regular hotel room, there will only be like the minibar-sized refrigerator. You'll get possibly a bar sink, but most of the time, there wouldn't even be a sink. It would probably have to go into the bathroom, you know, it's a whole lot of things that just wouldn't work. You might be able to stay there a week uncomfortably, but the extended stays are really just set up for three rooms right now and that's it. So it was always really meant to be the boutique hotel with a few rooms as extended stay because we do have the Pilot House. I mean, it isn't that the island is without any extended stay. The goal was, was to be able to have a few, but not for this to be another apartment. I mean, that, that was not the desire at all. The doctor didn't want that at all. This, we anticipate having more people at the holidays, have their parents, you know, come and stay or have a baby shower or somebody gets, you know, a wedding. These are weekend-type places. And then they, we really want them to go and use the restaurants. Our desire is, is, you know, go, sure, you can go across the street to Kroger and go buy your Lane Cuisine and shove it in the microscope, the little freezer that you'll get. But, you know, it, it's not gonna be something that we're, we're saying, please, move in. It's not gonna be designed that way.
That answers my question.
Thank you, Eric. Well, I, uh, I will echo what others have said is in terms of the, uh, meeting the six criteria that we have for a, uh, a special land use review, I think that clearly you have met that. And if you take, take a step back and think about the impact that this could have on other businesses, you know, the, the bar across the street, the restaurants down the block. Plus, the idea of the vision of Macomb Street is that it's, 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 it's walking, okay? It's people out on the street. So, you know, if you wanna go to, you wanna go to, uh, you know, Vitaly's across the street, you're not gonna drive a car. You're gonna, you're gonna walk across the street, go on down the sidewalk and take care of your business, okay? At, at Vitaly's. So, you know, this is the sort of thing that we wanna get. And so, uh, I think that this, uh, this, this particular plan meets the requirements across the board. Uh, most of the, most of the, uh, the things that I have concerns about are more detailed, specific. You know, that, that, things that, that, uh, Brian was talking about earlier that would be site plan sorts of things rather than, rather than, uh, the concept itself. The concept itself fits. So, uh, but I do have a question that builds on what Eric was saying down there about extended stay versus a hotel. When, when I think of a hotel, I think of like it's, it's manned 24 hours a day with somebody behind the desk or something like that. Is that true for an extended stay hotel?
Well, I mean, you do have to remember, it is still a boutique hotel with a few extended stay rooms. So there would be a front desk. There is the housekeeping all in, involved. So i- it does need to have, uh, a minimal staff because if somebody decides, you know, well, if something happens, you gotta have someone on staff who's gonna be able to go and address it. Otherwise, you, you know, you're not gonna last very long. If you, it's, customer service is gonna have to be a must. So there will need to be somebody at the front desk at all times to be able to address that.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure about the, the definitions on that. So that, that works out for me, I, I agree. Okay, uh, Brian, uh, as far as the motion for this and that the management, the one main issue that you mentioned as a contingency or a, a requirement would be the lot consolidation, coupled with, coupled with, uh, potentially easements.
Yes.
Okay, now easements, easements could be, uh, you know, there are potential easements within this, this property. I mean, wi- within the single block that would need to be constructed. How would those, how would those be defined for the applicant? Do we tell the applicant that or does the applicant tell us that?
In terms of the actual easement description, that would be the applicant's.
But I mean, we have to, we, if we have a contingency for that there will be easements and there will be a lot consolidation, is that adequate as far as what the board needs tonight?
Yes.
Or they need to know specifics?
No, I think that would be good and we'll, we'll incorporate that again. If there's favorable recommendation tonight, we'll do our typical findings of fact. We'll incorporate any conditions into that document that'll go to the board so they'll have an understanding of, of what exactly were the commission was looking for. And then as far as the, the combination process goes, that's just a, that's a simple form through the assessor's office. Uh, as far as the, the easement and/or access agreement, that maybe is a little more difficult. That'll have to be something developed as, uh, as part of their more formal site plan submittal.
Okay. Are there any other contingencies that I might have missed when, when, in your review? I didn't see anything that, that tied specifically to the special land use beyond this that you were, you were suggesting.
I would, it's, it, they all have to occur anyway, but I would, I, I like the consistency of, uh, of incorporating, addressing any comments provided by fire, engineering, DPS, and, um, demonstration of compliance with the Woodlands Ordinance. Cause I do think if we include those as conditions of the spec, those are all reasons to, to move the special use forward. Uh, and then it ties the special use to the site plan. So if we encounter an issue with any of those at site plan, uh, we're gonna have to ensure that the township is protected, that it's addressed because it was also a condition of special use approval.
Okay, so what you're saying is the condition of the special land use is that police, fire, DPS, engineering, we'll take a look at these plans before they come back to us for site plan review and be incorporated in the final design?
Correct.
Okay, and that would be a second contingency?
Yes. And that way, we, we get sort of the meshing. The, the process is necessarily split up into multiple steps. However, the special use and the site plan are, are intricately tied together. So I, I feel that it's, it's much more appropriate and that way the record will demonstrate that all these things were included. These were all the reasons why we made this recommendation. And then the applicant has an understanding that these are all elements that they need to abide by.
Okay, and so I would assume in the, in the findings, the fact that you would provide that you would step through the six categories, just basically in summary, like what you did for the board, so they would have the information to know what factors are reviewed and then have these two contingencies on top of it?
Absolutely. And they'll also get, uh, we usually include a, a copy of our review letter along with the findings of facts as well. So the, there's a little bit more detail behind it too than just the, the one-page findings of fact.
Okay, that's clear. Uh, I, I have one question for you, uh, that, that relates to, uh, material we got here today with... Okay, I, I, I don't know how this works, okay? We put a plan together and we approve it at that 34 parking spots. Okay, now down the road, uh, how is it determined? What role does the township play in determining whether in fact, gee, it shouldn't be 34, it should be 37 and you have to go back and do the expanded parking? I don't know how those two relate.
Well, I, I mean, at, at current time, they, they've provided you with the plan that meets your ordinance.
Okay.
Um, I believe what the, the petitioner, what their intent was to show you tonight with the handout material was the potential of how they could, uh, maybe expand if it was needed.
But that would be on their ter, that they would be...
Well, there's, there's a couple of ways we can, we can handle that. If we were to pursue it as the land banking of parking and it was approved as land-banked parking on the site plan, uh, ultimately, we could, uh, incorporate into that a requirement that the petitioner could build it if and when they saw fit or if the township observed parking issues with the site that you could come back and then require it of them. If they, if they, essentially if we start seeing people parking all up and down the street, we have people blocking driveway accesses or drive aisles or parking haphazardly, then we could certainly, uh, we could develop the language that would, uh, allow the township to also require its construction if it was deemed necessary.
Okay, this would not be special land use, this would be site plan?
Now, I would say that's a site plan issue specifically, yes.
Well, let, let's kind of, uh, let's make sure we don't lose that, uh, lose that thought because, uh, it's always difficult to know, you know, to, 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 what is the trigger?
Yes.
How does the trigger get pulled when something needs to be done like that?
Yeah.
And if, if we have the language in the site plan, that would work for me.
Right, well, and the other thing, because, because this is a, a special use and a full site plan, the, sort of the, the absolute endpoint of this whole process, if everything moves forward and is approved, will be the execution of a development agreement between the township and the petitioner. And those are the types of things we can incorporate into that as well. The terms and conditions of the approval, uh, get incorporated into the execution of that document. So I, I certainly feel as though we can, we can make sure it's covered. I, I think the ordinance does a decent job of addressing it as well. I'll, obviously, as we, as we move along, we'll confirm that and we'll make sure that's included as part of the site plan review.
Okay. Well, that completes all my questions and comments. If there are no other hands, then I would entertain a motion, please, regarding the, uh, special land use request. Do we have a motion?
I would make the motion, but I can't remember what the contingency was.
Okay, uh, we have a motion from Jay to, to approve the, uh, to, to, to recommend to, to the township board.
Did you have a slide with the proposed contingencies there?
So, just item two and... So just item two and item three.
I move that we approve the special land use, subject to the applicant complying with the Woodlands Ordinance, the grading and drainage requirements of the township engineer, any requirements of the township fire department, and any requirements of DPS, and further that the parcels be combined and that appropriate cross-access easements be, be signed, executed.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Ann, motion from Jay, additional discussion. Call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and a very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always much easier up here when there's a well-thought-out plan. Okay, let's move on to the chair's report. I'm sure you've all been waiting for that. The, you had in your package the budget. Again, we have a $5,000 budget. We have a balance of roughly $2,200 left for the calendar year, and so we're doing quite well on the budget, which takes us to the second point, which was at the last meeting, Jay, there was discussion raised about us getting back together for ordinance work.
Good.
And after, when January rolls around, that we need to resurrect this and move this on. There were some discussions, we had the sheet provided to us of the, of the ordinances at the last meeting, that we were talking about changing, and there was, there were a couple of minor changes, I think, to priorities that were made, and we want to make sure that we get back together again, and that was Jim, you, me, and Jay over here, I think, was, was the group.
I have a question. At our zoning board meeting the other night, we had...
That's okay.
And we didn't have a copy of the ordinance that had to do with the things you put on the roof.
For heating. And they did supply us a couple of sheets, but we don't have the update on the sheets that have been revised.
They don't, the ordinance books, ZBA ordinance books are not updated?
Well, it wasn't in my book.
Okay, well, then I would suggest...
We don't have the up-to-date ordinances that have been processed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that. We'll make sure everybody's got complete books. I think even planning commission, I think, is still short the last round.
They presented it, yeah, they put it on the table for us.
But the solar panels, that was several years ago, so...
But anyway.
All right, they will just run entirely new ones.
Can we make sure that, let's go through and let's make sure that both zoning board of appeals and the planning commission have all the, all the recent ordinances?
I didn't have it, so...
Okay, well, maybe it slipped through the cracks some way, but we'll get you up to speed. How about that?
But there's been more than just that one on...
Oh, yes, there have. Okay, so that's a good point. I'm glad you raised that, because we've got to have accurate information to make proper decisions.
Right.
So Jay, look for you to maybe talk to Brian, and let's see if we can get a date and time set in January. Maybe after this meeting, we can pick time and go on from there. So that takes care of that. Next meeting date, we're out into, into next year, January 6th, February 3rd, and February 17th are dates that kind of come to mind. Brian, based on what's on, what's out there right now, what, are there other applications? I know that we've referred some to ZBA.
We do have one that's pending that will be signing to ZBA, I believe, in January, and that ultimately will require planning commission as well. So I'm just looking at the calendar. So the ZBA would be January 21st, which if you, if the commission were to...
Would it be the 21st?
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, wait, wait.
Twenty-eighth, yeah.
What year is it? I'm sorry. The 28th, correct, thanks, Ann. The 28th of January, so I would suggest that the 3rd of February is a pretty quick turnaround for us to try to accommodate.
One to the next.
So if you were to consider February, if you went with the 17th, I think we'd be in position that if that project receives the variance that they're seeking, that we could have it ready to present to you on February 17.
I think that would also give the, the special land use, you know, that time to get approved by the board, and then time to work on the resolving the site plan issues before coming back to us.
Yep.
So how does February 17th look for everybody? Okay, let's kind of lock that in on the 17th, and maybe, Jay, by that time, we can have, we can have maybe an ordinance, you know, something ready to roll out for discussion.
Okay.
That's target for that. Okay, that completes the chair's report. Are there any other topics anybody would like to raise at this time?
I don't know if that's...
Yes, Mickey, go ahead.
Is there anything in the budget left for training?
Yes, we have training money. Is there, is there training you would like to attend?
Earlier, I'd heard that there was some good training when you first sent in this commission, and I'd definitely be interested. I don't know where...
Yeah, Brian, Brian, we, we have sent commissioners to local training for, for planning commission members. I'll tell you what, Brian, could you work with, okay, how do we, how do we, how do we work this? What's the right way to do this?
Well, typically, if the commissioner sees something that they want to attend, then they just let us know, and then I think, I think the township usually arranges for reimbursement.
Yep.
But if you, if there isn't anything specific, we can certainly, we'll take a look at the typical calendar of the State Planning Association, and I can, either Lori or I can send that to you specifically, so you can look and see what is available, and then ultimately pick the, the location and timing that works best for you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, would you do that both for Cheryl, too?
Sure.
How about anybody else?
I can do it for everybody if you want. I mean, it's not, it's not difficult. Just a quick email.
Okay, why don't you just...
I don't know if we have budget to send to everybody, but...
What? Send it down to everybody.
That's Dale's problem, that's Dale's problem, not mine, so...
I think most people have already concluded I'm not trainable, so they wouldn't, you wouldn't waste your money on me.
We've been trying for years. It hasn't gotten us anywhere.
I'm hopeless. Okay, so, yes.
If you, if you use this sheet to email me, it's bartlett.mickey. There's just a dot in between my last and first name.
Ah, a correction.
Oops.
Lori, will you reissue that to everybody, please? Okay, very good points. Training is important.
Thank you.
All right, any other topics? Any other issues or concerns? Okay, on that note, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Eric, support.
Support.
Jay, call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a nice Christmas.